All right, we're going to reconvene the special meeting of the State Board of Education to discuss all the fine candidates that we've learned about and heard from. And you can't say enough thanks to our, all the candidates, all the applicants, the semifinalists and our finalists for their ability and willingness to step forward and engage in this kind of public scrutiny and discussion, important discussion about where we go in Michigan to improve education, how we get there, and how each of them, I'm sure, could help us a lot. And as you know, this is not easy and it's going to be very difficult to figure out who we believe on balance has the combination of skills, abilities, experience, and relationship with us and stakeholders that's going to be most effective. But that's our job and that's what we're going to do. So, we're going to first go around and ask each board member and Karen to share reflections on each of the candidates, strengths, weaknesses, particular observations relative to our goals. And we'll do that once and then we'll probably do some informal preferences and see where that takes us and work that through until we come to what I hope ultimately, if we see where we're going, what I hope will be strong bipartisan and maybe even unanimous support ultimately. So, knowing this is difficult and there's going to be certainly different points of view, appreciating that, that's who we are and we'll have a collective board decision, hopefully, today. With that, Cassandra, would you like to reflect on the three candidates and what we've heard, what we've learned, and where we might go?
Sure. So, I have said it before and I will say it again, I think that we had a tremendous, a wonderful group of people who applied for the position. Our six candidates that we brought forward were all very good candidates. And the three that we chose for finalist are all fully capable of doing this job. And I think any one of them would be very good at it. So, this is a really, really difficult decision for us to make. Just a couple of thoughts off the top of my head about the candidates. Brian Whiston, I still think that the fact that he has a tremendous amount of legislative experience is extremely helpful. I think that he has support from both sides of the aisle, which is also good. He's, I think he's a good consensus candidate. I think he's very bipartisan. I didn't hear anything that would concern me about moving him forward as a state superintendent. And I heard a lot of things that I think were very positive. So, that's just very quickly on him. And then we had Vicky Markovich. Vicky, I think, is clearly an exceptional interviewer. She did a really good job of being concise and yet directly answering every question that we asked of her. And also, some pretty tough questions about whether she would in fact be someone who could work with both sides of the aisle. I think, I still appreciate the fact that she comes from the teaching background, that she has a lot of experience in special education, although I know that there are some parents of children with special needs who did express some concerns to us about that. I think she has a wide background that is very helpful. And I think particularly the fact that she is currently working with the Pontiac Schools is exactly the type of work that we need to do in this department is also a very, very good positive for her. And then our final candidate, Scott Menzel. Again, I think he's also a very dynamic candidate. He has a little bit, doesn't have as much of a varied background, but certainly has done some, some good things in his background, has made some good relationships, also showed some bipartisan support with both Democrats and Republicans supporting him. I do appreciate his focus on equity in education and closing the achievement gap and also his support of early childhood education. So, ultimately, I would say that we have three great candidates and we need to have a thorough conversation because this is a tough choice.
Thanks. Michelle?
Well, Cassandra just said everything I was. Hi.
Did it very well.
Yeah, did it very, much better than I would. Yeah, I will second that what I liked about Brian was, you know, the fact that he was, I think he's somebody that is a build consensus, has experience in the legislature, you know, obviously has that immediate practical experience of what it's like to be in a district with all these reforms going on right now. It's really close to seeing the immediate effects of those policies and maybe able to bring that into the state level. And I don't see it as a disadvantage to be at that level. I think it might be an advantage to see, to be able to understand what's happening and use it to be, you know, to inform a higher level of the education community, upper level, I guess I should say. I also, I mean personally, I think Vicky knocked the ball out of the park. I think she had just the depth, you know, her explanation of what to do with a deficit district was so detailed, you know, getting the loan, this amount, you get this much for kids and then you can put the money into the, I mean, it was like, and it was, it was clear, it was precise, it was like, you know, has, has very practical application of how to really get stuff done. And I was impressed with that. And she's very well versed on research and very clear about explaining in a practical way what to do. That sounds like it could be, and it seems like it's very effective. So, it wasn't just broad stroking policy. She has ready to run and roll with a lot of very specific things that I could think would be very useful. And what I like about Scott is he certainly has a fan base. He certainly has won over a lot of people and, and that means a lot. I mean, the ability to work and have, form coalitions with groups and have such a varied amount of folks think so highly of him. So, that speaks well to me. And this is really going to be a tough decision for me. So, I'm just going to listen to what everyone else says until I have more to say.
Richard?
Thank you. I concur with most of what Cassandra and Michelle have had to say. I was struck by different styles. Mr. Whiston is more of a, you know, lean back and let's, let's discuss it first. Dr. Markovich is more of a, I know what to do in this and here's the direction we ought to go. And Mr. Menzel is more of a relationship consensus builder. And each has great strengths. I don't think this is a hard choice at all. It's, it's a great choice because no matter who you choose, you're going to get somebody who can do the job and bring some real strengths to the position. Having said that, I'm impressed with the support for Scott Menzel and the difficulty of merging school districts. I foresee more of that in Michigan's future. So, I think his skill set is matched to some of the challenges we're going to have to face in the coming years. So, I would, I would, I would favor him at this point.
Karen?
It's really hard to sit here knowing that I have one foot in one office and a foot in 90% of the rest of my body in, back in Ottawa County, and wanting to weigh in one way and not being able to. So, what I will, what I will say is that I was surprised to hear that we had a gubernatorial preference for this position. And one of the things that I do want to say is that I have not been given any kind of indication or instructions on who I should be in here advocating for. So, I want to clear that up. I was asked to come and listen and to understand how the candidates would respond to your inquiry and questions because you're going to choose one of these individuals in scant minutes. And regardless of who you choose, we are going to have to carve out a wonderful working relationship between a lot of different parties and a lot of different people. I don't think it is misunderstood or lost on anyone in the executive office that you are elected to represent 10 million people in the state of Michigan and their one and a half million children. And when I look around this room today, there was only one person that mattered and she was sitting in the back row and her name was Patrice. And when I think about that, that that's what has to drive us all every day to work is doing what's best for Patrice and her 1.4 some million cohorts, is that we have to understand how to work with each other and respect the work that we bring to the table, knowing we are going to differ from time to time. I agree that the candidates bring different skill sets to the job. I do think we need to, I would encourage you to consider a candidate who you think is best suited to build those relationships and re-energize a collective vision for the common interest, the best interest of the common good. That's what I would say about the candidates.
Thank you. Elaine?
Taking them in the order in which they came. Brian Whiston is a non-traditional candidate. He has strengths, but also weaknesses that come with that picture because he didn't enter education administration until the last seven years. Brian helped me extensively when I started on State Board of Ed with political insight and issue knowledge, which I very much appreciated. But there's a very large learning curve between local district issues and the state superintendent responsibilities despite that expensive lobbying, extensive lobbying background. For Dr. Markovich, she is sort of the physical embodiment of the teacher and principal everybody wanted to have. You know, Vicky just has that presence about her and you want to touch it. It's good. She has in-depth knowledge of organization and personnel. But when I asked her directly, she didn't address how she would use this MDE's resources, back channels, government relations, board connections, to change her external communication style. And the reason that concerned me is because she does acknowledge it's caused confusion between her actual and publicly perceived positions on important issues. I also think that we've watched over time the condensation of time that you get to respond to issues, discretion with which you have to decide quickly whether or not it's your view, the board's view, what you think is best for children, all of the rest of those issues, that it would be more difficult with her reputation and past for her to do that part of the job well. Scott Menzel, in my eyes, is the only candidate who is able to articulate a clear application of his past extensive experiences to statewide responsibilities and opportunities for change. That 1.5 million children, that number, that vision, came up over and over again in his presentation. And more important, he has the practical knowledge that's grounded in today's opportunities and challenges in business, education, and the political realities that are facing our schools. And he would be my candidate.
Again, I didn't ask people to express their preferences at this point, though there's nothing to stop people, but to talk about each of the candidates in terms of.
You're juggling everybody, that's all. Well, I agree with, Cassandra's description was very good, I thought. I like Brian, he's, I liked his sort of relaxed stance. He was just relaxed. And I really appreciate his, his experience in Dearborn and working in a difficult district with a large Arab population, was immigrant, a lot of them were immigrants. That was a difficult population of schoolchildren and parents who were unfamiliar with our system perhaps. And he's, he seems to have handled that very effectively and I think that's a big plus. I, I know him from his lobbying experience. I was a lobbyist myself at that time and worked with, and say that he was very effective. He knows how to work very well with people and they like, they respond positively to him. And I also appreciate his experience, 17 years on a local board, which brings a completely different perspective than, from our point of view sometimes, rather than the superintendent's point of view. So, he's got both sides of the, of the table, so to speak. So, I think those are all big pluses. I thought Vicky was superb today. She was, I thought she, she really did a superb job. And I think that speaks very highly of her because I think it comes from a depth of experience. She is the only one who actually worked as a teacher. Brian had student teaching experience and college teaching, but she had K-12 and special ed experience, actually, although we know we got critical letters from the group of parents. And when I talked to other people in Oakland County, I got much more positive responses about Vicky in special ed. So, pays you money, takes your choice, I guess. So, I'm very impressed with Vicky. And the fact that she, she has worked not only well, but very effectively with Brooks Patterson, Tom McMillan, these are not the easiest guys in the world. They don't do that all the time. And yet she seems to have done very well with them. So, it seems to me she could vote, she could work very well with both sides of the aisle. And Scott, obviously, as you said, has a fan base. I mean, it's really interesting that so many people have come today to speak in his behalf. He obviously has done a good job. So, I talked to quite a few people here in the audience when we broke and I asked them what they think. Then they all told me, everybody, nobody would say who they were for. They all said, boy, you have a tough choice. All three of them were great. Any one would be good. And I think that's true. I think we do have a, maybe, you don't think it's a tough choice because you've already made up your mind, but I quite have.
It's just not a tough choice.
It's, I'm very happy that these are the people who we have to choose from.
Lupin?
Voy a hablar todo en español porque esto es muy difícil. I'm going to say everything in Spanish because this is a very difficult.
Very clever. I wish I could speak a language.
No, por favor.
Okay, Cassandra. No, por favor, she has said so, okay. All right, well, let's take Brian. Brian was the first one. And I like Brian's presentation in what he alluded to what's happening in his area because he said that he has an open door. An open door to his staff, his teaching staff, his parents, and everybody else. So, open door means to me, you can come and talk to me whenever you have a concern. Hopefully, people go in that open door when they have something good to say to. He also talked about celebration, celebrating successes. And that's one of the things that I have tried to do at the, sitting at this table, bringing successes that are happening in, in the schools because, yes, there's problems, but there's a lot of successes that are out there in, in the schools or we wouldn't be operating at all. So, I like that celebration word that he used. He was very convincing that he has a lot of very good programs that are working in his school district. And starting with, you know, he talked about preschool, special ed, the diversity component, which of course I'm very adamant about. So, those were very good programs that he talked about. And of course, I was a teacher for a long time. I was an MEA person. And so, I appreciated the fact that he works with the teachers. I did ask him what relationship he has with the teachers because I expect everybody to walk in the shoes of a teacher at least one hour in their whole, in, in one year. Because that's how you know exactly what's happening in the classroom. And if you're going to be the leader of a school district, you go and sit there with the kids, with the teacher, and find out exactly what's happening. So, visits, yeah, they're wonderful. But as a teacher, I wanted the principal to come and sit with me at least for an hour a year. That's all I want. So, that's why I kept asking for that kind of information. All right, with Vicky, she was very, very well prepared today, well, she was prepared the other day too. She's very well informed. She, she has a depth of, of experience. Her, her experience started in a classroom on up to the superintendencehip. So, her career path, that's another thing with Brian. He, in my mind, doesn't have that career path that takes you up to the superintendencehip. And to me, that's very, very important, going up the ladder. Yeah, okay. And with Vicky, she did go up the ladder, starting in the classroom on up to where she is now. She, she was very well informed. Every question we asked, she elaborated for quite a while and gave us a lot of examples, a lot of ways that she would improve whatever she was doing and she would take it to the next step. She gave me an idea of what she would do the first 50 days in, in the position. Brian had a 100-day program that he, he talked about in, in having different committees and that he would do in 100 days. But I shortened it to 50 so it would be more. Okay, so then with Scott, with Scott, I, some people say that he's a self-promoter. Well, hey, I am a self-promoter too. And, and the way you get there is by hard work. You show that you work hard because I wouldn't have the following that I do if people didn't believe in me. A leader is not a leader if there's nobody following him. So, it is very obvious in this room and in all the letters that I received in behalf of Scott, that he is a leader because he's got a lot of followers. And having said that, if that's self-promoting, so be it. I have a lot of followers because I work very hard and, and people follow and believe in what I'm doing. So, that's what it takes to be a leader, having followers. He was very passionate about his programs, very in tune as to what are the needs of the child of, of the, the student population. And he's working towards increasing that involvement, that academic achievement throughout the school district, whether it be specifically in, in preschool. And, and I have always advocated to, in my school district when I was a teacher, that the pre-K, the third grade, was where we should be putting resources. Because in, with my student population Latinos, as you heard Roberto say yesterday, we have 50% dropout. So, I would say, why are you putting resources when they're dropping out? Let's put it over here. So, preschool is a very important component. And I'm so glad that the governor, the legislature, and on down, everybody's on the same page as far as preschool, early childhood is concerned. He builds relationships, which is very important. As we saw the young man that, that skipped work today, that relationship was built within the last three years, I think he said. And if you weren't crying, I was. Because it was very emotional, very touching that, that he can do that kind of thing. That is called social justice. That is called what you, what you call making personal relationships to move the agenda forward. And so, that was very, very powerful. And combining the two school districts, one school district being more affluent and the other school district being more of a diverse culture and putting, even when I moved to a new building, that was catastrophe. That was traumatic for me and for the staff that I was going to go into. So, I cannot imagine getting two school districts that were so very, very different and trying to get them together to work together. So, that's, that's very powerful right there. Okay, off top, and another thing, of course, the three of them were, were very close to unions. You saw many testimonies here. That's very, very important because the teachers are the ones that move that needle in any school district. Again, I say the teachers are the heartbeat of any school district.
One disagrees. So, this is my third month on a job. I need practice with that. And yeah, this is very difficult. I mean, these were three very strong candidates that we got a lot of feedback on, through inboxes on Facebook, obviously through emails, through phone calls, sitting in meetings and people leaning over and, and telling us, you know, what their thoughts were on the candidate. So, this is very difficult because they are very, three strong candidates. They're, are all worthy of filling the shoes of Mike. So, looking at the first candidate, Brian Whiston, and I agreed with, with much of what was said here already. I really appreciate his, his legislative experience, broad support and ability to walk or work with a broad cross-section of folks, both sides of the aisle, very strong support from union. I was really, you know, impressed by the fact that with him working with the Dearborn schools, that's a diverse makeup of schools and he really expressed that. Third highest with, with urban, or third highest urban district there is in the state. I was really impressed also by, and I can't remember exactly what the title of the program was, but his push to get parent involvement, as well as his, his understanding of knowing that there needs to be these systemic changes to, to, to move educational achievement. With Vicky, again, a strong interviewer as she was the last time, she, she was again today. You know, some of the things that, that again, I'll express, the, you know, some of the things that she's, that are viewed as deficits to me, they're, her showing that she's courageous, has the experience, the skills, and the will to, to express and do what, what she feels that she needs to have done. We see that that happens across policymakers, that, that happens. But she's still able to, to do that, but still getting support, again, from a broad cross-sector. She is able to work with Republicans. We've, that has been expressed. So, able to be, work with both sides of the aisle, although we've heard otherwise. I do appreciate, and we saw again today, that, that, that her decisions are based on data, data-driven decisions. And she showed us that through her presentation. Looking at the, the last candidate, yes, very, very impressed by, by the showing, the showing of support that, that came and showed up. I, I think that that was very well put together. I think that he, you know, he articulates very well, was able, is able to show that he's a collaborator, as with the other candidates who, who have some experience in the cradle to grave, as well as educational experience, as well as that drive to, to ensure that, that we're looking at cradle to, I'm sorry, not cradle to grave. I'm going to my environmental world. I'm sorry, cradle to career. So, really able to, you know, he was, he was able to, to, you know, articulate well that, that he has that, that understanding and that drive. So, again, you know, looking at all the candidates, very able to, to me, they show that they are able to, to build coalitions or build collaboration, I should say. And some of our candidates have had, had wonderful and a depth of experience such as Vicky. So, I really appreciate that, so.
Great, thanks Pam. My reflections, I had to just remind myself, as I boiled down our criteria, as we put it together, and even as I shared it with the candidates, all the candidates, whenever they wanted to talk about it, I was reflecting on our desire to, and truly my desire to and truly my desire to, a, have someone with the, a vision and a kind of effective education improvement and reform agenda that was sort of right substantively, that someone who had some real experience in moving that agenda forward, in improving educational outcomes and achievement and closing achievement gaps, and so had done that work and could do more of it at a larger scale, with that kind of evidence. At this stage, someone too who was probably more interested in getting that work done, moving the needle and improving performance than, and that's why they wanted to be superintendent, than being a politically important person in Michigan. The fourth, someone who could work straight up with us as a board and help us work very closely together, but also had the added benefit of working very, very effectively with all the stakeholders in education to help us move effort. The field, practitioners, the governor, the legislature. And so when I boiled down in my conversation, so I just made myself reflect on what we've heard from the candidates. And I just put Vicky at the top of my page, meaning as I, she's just literally, her notes are written here at the top of the page. I think clearly she has tremendous education leadership abilities and accomplishments. She had evidence of moving the needle in student achievement. I think she laid out maybe a better understanding of her education improvement agenda, including, than was understood, including elements that I appreciate, like the EAA was a good idea worth trying. And if it hadn't been compromised by crosswalk legislation that Richard McClellan authors that wanted to open up unlimited and poor quality charter schools, I supported it. And that's the reason, in my view, it got compromised from the get-go. So that was appreciated, Common Core. She, I didn't press her, we haven't pressed her, would she, as she got the job, take off and use it to be a bulldog for what Vicky Markovich wants? I trust not, but had some always a bit of reservations on that score. Would she work well and straight up with us as a board? I believe, yes, she said as much. And would she work effectively with the governor, the legislature, and the field? And I think, I think she did anything she could today and beyond to suggest that she certainly was committed to that and could be effective at that, whether it's enough to change that dynamic of perception and reality. I'm not sure, but it's, I think she did a good job at kind of leavening that understanding. When I think about these criteria and think about Brian, I think substantively definitely has the right agenda in terms of content, from Common Core to how we spend money to get better outcomes, to having the right understanding and honest conversation about choice and charters needs to be had. So I was, I was very comfortable with the sort of substantive agenda and that Brian represents. I think he has shown evidence, and I'm not one to historically, you know, imagine a lobbyist would be the best candidate, but as an educator, an educational leader, I think he showed some good evidence that he has both moved the needle in achievement in Dearborn and had managed his team and education organization effort to be effective and to get more effective and continuously improve. I think of all the candidates, certainly Brian was the one who just kind of animates, I want to do this because I want to get it done versus being a big, important political person. And that was, that solidness, that straightforwardness was very welcome. I think of all the, he also was very clear, and I sensed and talking to other people who have worked with him, from Dan Degrow to David Hecker, the trust and loyalty and straightforwardness with others in education and his board would mean that on, you know, my fourth criteria, working straight up and straightforwardly with us on a common page is very profound with Brian. I also, we heard a lot from a lot of people that weren't publicly presented in terms of third-party perspective. The field educators, superintendents, practitioners in the field on balance have tremendous trust and confidence in Brian. And there, as I said at the first interview, I think there'd be a tremendous sigh of relief about the Brian in this role, a sort of straightforward relationship of mutual trust and ability to work together, just a work-together ability that's very profound. I think we've heard enough from that Brian would be effective, is interested and thoughtful about how to be effective with the field and the governor. I mean, the legislature and the governor has good relationships and strong relationships that can be built on and be helpful in navigating that sometimes tricky terrain. With Scott, again, on these same criteria, as you know, Scott certainly has the right vision, the right substantive agenda, the right set of notions of what kind of policy improvements, you know, from teachers to early childhood, and he's acted on those. I know his heart, too, is in the right place in terms of wanting to move this forward. Having done it successfully, I continue to have informed by, you know, some thoughtful people who I respect a lot in education, reservations about either lack of attention or inability to manage to follow through the innovations that have happened and so that Ypsilanti will a run is not got the kind of ongoing durable support to improve achievement and close achievement gaps and may be worse off today than it was before. And similarly, similar concerns about sort of delivery of services and improvement in other areas and sort of lack of moving the needles that Scott mentioned, closing achievement gaps and following through on the work, the hard work, to make sure that's what happens. On the third criteria, more interested in this job, why in this job? Certainly, we all say, and I believe, we want to do this to change the lives of children, 1.5 million of them, and prove those things. I'll take Scott at his word for that. But if, among the candidates, there certainly was a bit more of a campaign for this job. And that can be very good. Lupe is fond of campaigns. It's also something that gives me sometimes some reservation. On the fourth criteria, really working straight up with us and on the same page, no surprises, no unilateral decision-making. Again, I have to, that's why I ask these questions, take Scott at his word, that that would be the case. And actually, we have a relationship, and I think that certainly would be the case. The support from many quarters that you've seen for Scott reflects, you know, a real ability, as many testified, to bring people forward and build allies. And that can be a great strength, and it is, I view it as a good thing if he has good relationships with the governor and legislature and across the aisles. And that's not at all what I'm concerned about. That can be very helpful to all of us as we try to work together to move forward. I appreciate your comments, too, Karen. So that's my reflections on our candidates. And as, again, just echoing, it is a tremendously difficult decision with tremendously qualified and effective people for this job. Unless others would like to make comments after having listened to each other, and we're going to talk more, we're not going to start voting, but I think one way to move forward would be now for each of us to name your first choice and your second choice. And we'll go around the table and we'll write those down and see where that sort of leaves us. And then we'll discuss more and persuade each other more towards our choices and see how we move closer to a selection. So Cassandra, if you were to put your first and second choices, who would they be?
Well, let me just preface it by saying, if I were choosing solely based on the interviews, Vicky Markovich would certainly be my number-one choice. But understanding that there are other considerations to take into account, I would say my number-one choice would be Brian Whiston, followed by Vicky.
Followed by? I would say Vicky, followed by Brian.
Richard?
I would say Scott Menzel, followed by Brian Whiston.
Eileen?
I would say Scott Menzel, and I have no second choice.
You haven't done a second choice? Kathleen?
Just writing it down, just a no-second-choice. I too will take Vicky as my first choice and Brian as my second.
Lupe?
Scott is my first. And I haven't decided on my second.
Pam?
Vicky would be my first and Brian would be my second.
And Brian is my first and Vicky is my second. So given those preferences, we have, Brian has one, two, three, four, five first or second votes. Vicky has one, two, three, four, five first or second votes. And Scott has three first-place votes, first preference votes, or preferences, these are not votes. I would propose, the advocates for Scott, continue to make your case and see if anybody wants to change their vote.
Okay. Point that's been made to me on, by more than one individual is Scott has important experience with rural education, which in many cases also offers education as well. I think that's an additional skill, experience that he brings to the position.
Anybody else?
I think it's unfortunate that the, since my perception of Scott as a candidate is so completely different than the list that you went through on each of the points, I think it's unfortunate that we didn't have the kind of support for other candidates here that we did for him today. And that also the detractors did not make a case in my written documents or in my phone calls because I didn't get any of that. So I'm evaluating him on the work that I've seen him do in the intermediate school district, not Livingston, because I wasn't familiar with him then. But I view him as a person of stellar character, incredible administrative abilities, with the reach to, the mental and emotional and philosophical reach to impact children in Michigan, as this board has said over and over again that it wants to see happen. I think that he has a special ed experience, the ability to function preschool through employment that we have not had, that kind of experience. We've had certainly the vision of that, but not the actual experience in this seat, in the years that I've been on the board. So I would strongly advocate that people take a solid look at his candidacy.
Anybody else want to advocate?
Well, yeah, of course, I advocate for Scott, for all the reasons that I said. Now, when you introduced your three perspectives, you said some of the reasons why you did not like this one or this one or this one. I didn't do that. I just said the positive things. So I want to go back and say why I have reservations for Brian. And the reservations are his career ladder, that is a big thing for me. Another one is the, what I have been reading, reading in the paper, whether it happened five years ago or 10 years ago, that's irrelevant. And his answer, it is why it is. And so I didn't like that flippant way of expressing something that is very, very, very important in his job, because he can come back and either tarnish the department or tarnish the position as state superintendent. So I have reservations on that. And then another reservation that I have is that he criticized the department that he's going to be working with. So to me, that is a big thing because the Michigan Department of Education or the people that he's going to be leading, and when he says negative things about the department, I have problems with that. So, and then with Vicky, she was marvelous. She knows her stuff, like we say. She knows her stuff. But if you cannot get along with, well, perspectives or reality, and that's the, I don't know her personally, I've never worked with her, but the perception is that she would have problems working with some sectors, some of our stakeholders that are very, very important in this picture. With Scott, he has the right spirit, the right career ladder. He has the right experience, the right dimension for this position. I think he would get along real well with the department. He will get along with the governor, the legislature, and certainly with the people because there's a lot of support here. You said that Lupe thinks that this is, you know, important. Yes, it is. If you don't have people that follow you, how can you be the leader? Like I say, a leader is not a leader if he doesn't, he or she doesn't have followers. So that's very important. When you run for office, you go and campaign and try to get people behind you. That's just a common thing that you do. And if all, the two other candidates had been smart, they would have done the same thing or had gotten people to do it for them. Showing support from community, parents, and stakeholders is very, very important. So I say that Scott has all of the above, and I cast my vote for Scott.
Preference.
Preference, I'm sorry.
Given that, appreciate your comments. Is anyone interested in changing that initial preference voting? Appreciate the strong advocacy and the difficulty of all this. Given that, I would suggest we focus on Brian and Vicky. Brian had six first or second-place preferences, and Vicky had five first or second-place preferences, and have some more discussion about each of them. And we can go around again for everybody and share perspective on persuasiveness on first versus second.
In higher ed, the role of the presidency has changed. All right, so I'm making an analogy here. It used to be that the role of the president was to be an administrator of the college or the university. And now, the role of a president is much more of an external role. You have internal people who handle the day-to-day operations of the college or the university. And your role as a president is to be out talking to donors, making connections, testifying in front of the legislature. And I see kind of the superintendent role following that same trajectory. You know, at one time, the superintendent might have had, you know, was required to be the day-to-day manager, operator of the department. And I think that that still exists. But I see that role kind of changing to being someone who is more, has to make those relationships, has to build those connections. And that's why I lean towards Brian, because I think he has a background of doing that. And I think we said from the beginning that we were willing to look at candidates who are not your traditional candidates, who had maybe different backgrounds that brought them to this position as opposed to just coming up through the traditional ranks. And so really, that was, that's the focus for me and why I selected Brian, is because he has so many years of working with, directly with legislators, understanding the legislative process. And I do think he has done a good job of building relationships. And I think he's done it in a way that has not been off-putting to one side or the other. And I just want to make, also be very clear, I am not in opposition to anyone. I'm simply arguing on behalf of the particular candidate. It doesn't mean that I oppose any of the other candidates. But that's where my thinking is.
Michelle?
Well, I think, looking at the criteria and looking at the candidates, I think that Vicky fits that, all the things we said we wanted in a candidate or in a superintendent. And one of those, which I think even Lupe was important to her, was that they have teaching experience and local school experience. And that she has. She also, again, seems, I mean, the problem that I had, and they all, like I said, they all were very good, but sometimes speaking in sort of general terms, it's hard to get an idea of, does this person really have, what are they actually going to implement? And the clarity which Vicky spoke about, all these different options and ideas that had been tested and that had been successful and that, you know, knowing the research, understanding, you know, and she had the rural, she had the, you know, Pontiac, urban, she has worked in a variety of settings, and she's got a length. Now, Mike, and she's got the length of time and the diversity of experience and the research and has, you know, proven herself. I look at sort of the length of time, for instance, that Scott has, which I'm, unless I'm wrong, it's about 12 years in the school system, none of which has been, unless I'm wrong, maybe somebody can correct me, as a teacher or a principal. So, and I would, and none of it is with very diverse So, and I would, and none of it is with very diverse communities of large.
We're just talking about Vicki and Brian now. Just relative to those two, share your perspective.
Okay, sorry. Well, it's what makes her stand out to me, is that she does have all this experience, and very diverse geographical areas, and demographics, and she's got ideas to actually be, that are effective, that have been proven to be effective, and that a lot of times, she's implemented personally. And I think that's, that's what we need.
And vis a vis Brian?
Again, I like, you know, Brian is, he's, again, as Richard pointed out, their styles are much different. Brian, I think, is somebody who is going to listen, and listen to the department, and listen to people, the board, and he also has that experience in the district. But again, in the, you know, obviously, he's been able to be successful in this environment, very challenging environment of all this change that's been happening. And that speaks a lot to me, that he's able to juggle this, he understands it, he's been successful with it. But again, I, so my preference is still Vicki with Brian as my second choice.
Richard, what are your reflections on the two?
Well, as Dr. Markovich mentioned, conceded two or three times, she's been misunderstood in the public, and personally, I don't think she's been misunderstood at all. I think that's her great appeal for some members of our board. But if we take her comments at face value, then I think that we probably don't want someone who's prone to being misunderstood, communicating from the board to the field, to the legislature, so on and so forth, so. And obviously, Mr. Wiston has the lobbying experience. They both have strengths, in some ways complimentary, and it's, really depends what the board wants to get done in the next couple of years.
Thanks, Karen. It would be helpful if you, willing for you to share a perspective on these two, not when we get to preference voting, but just, the governor's perspective is very important.
You know, and I don't, I really honestly don't believe that I could represent that well in this conversation right now. I just don't have enough time in that office to have a fair representation of that for you right now. I think that, you know, my previous comments on our commitment to working with whomever this board chooses, is, remains that commitment to working with whomever this board chooses. That's your responsibility, you're elected officials, and you bear that responsibility on your shoulders to obviously represent the best interest of the common good. I will just reiterate that our preference is that we, you know, that you seriously consider an individual who has great relational quality, and can incorporate all the stakeholders at the table, not just the ones sitting at this table right now, but all of the stakeholders at the table.
Thank you. Eileen?
I respect Vicki and Brian tremendously, but for me, there's an opportunity right now in the state with the adequacy study coming up, to take the things that we've said are our goals and values for children, and find a new discussion. Both of the candidates you're talking about are from one county, Oakland, intermediate school district. I am searching for a fresh voice and a fresh role for putting the difficulties of the last four years behind us, that were due to a lot of legislative misunderstandings. I, because of that, I truly think that we're going in the wrong direction with either of these voters, not because they're not great people, but because they are people who will maintain the direction that we've been on, which is not a bad one, but it hasn't gotten all the results that we're on. So I'm concerned about Vicki, who was unable, she's certainly addressed that she takes a direction from her board, but she did not address what would be different about the misunderstandings that she's had of her own personal views versus the perception in Lansing of how she, what she believes. And for Brian, I firmly believe that it's too big a jump for a non-traditional candidate to go from a district superintendency to the complexities, for example, of testing. Would that we could do testing based on what parents want, which is a very good thing, to know that their children are achieving. But because we have state and federal laws, it can't be that way, and yet that was a tentative at his first interview, and I'm not sure that he really understood this. That is a huge issue for us. We want what's right for children, we all do. But if you can't test, if you go for testing that doesn't test our standards, we're in violation of our own laws, not to mention federal ones. Beyond that, I don't believe I can, I will continue, as you go around the table, to try to lens insight on the issues that others are bringing up, but I don't match either of these two candidates with what you said you want your goal to be, which is meeting the gaps, trying to figure out how to move children from their first contact with school into job placements that are productive, filling those 80,000 jobs that we know are unfilled in STEM areas. And I don't believe that either of these candidates will bring the same ability to perform on that to the job as Scott Menzel would have.
Let me just reiterate, I believe, seeing the preferences, there were not enough preferences for, to reflect that Scott would likely get the votes, and there were five or six first or second for Brian or Vicki, so he's trying to encourage all of us to relatively.
There were three for Scott Menzel in first place, and he's been eliminated from this in preference to two other candidates who come from Oakland County and are very similar in a lot of the things that they would do. I would posit to you that even though you say that, that this is a reform discussion versus a maintenance discussion. And I think that probably the board needs to face that, because it'll be perceived that way outside the board.
I don't agree with you. I think all three of them want to do, want to make reforms. They want to take a new look. I think that Vicki and Brian both want to take a new look at different ways of achieving what we're trying to achieve. And I think Vicki was talking about Pontiac as being an example of maybe a way of doing it. And Brian also had experience in schools in Dearborn that were successful in, not necessarily advantaged, in a not necessarily advantaged district. So I think they all wanted to come in, they all said practically the same thing about coming into the department, and in answer to Lupe's question of what would they do in the first 50 days, or 100 days, whatever.
Now 50 days.
Now 50 days of this, they would all do the same thing. They would all meet with the staff, they would all listen, they would meet with the stakeholders, they would all listen, they would try to correct anything that perceptions that people had, maybe rearrange a few things. But they all thought that, I didn't think Brian was critical of the department, I thought he was, there was very good services provided, maybe there were one or two things that he could have, he felt he could approve. But before he did that, he would sit down and listen, meet with everybody, but none of them felt that they were going to walk in here and turn everything upside down, or keep everything the same. And that's true of any chief executive who walks into a new situation. That's what you do. You listen to people, you meet with people, you talk with people. And they all talked about, we have not been successful in doing what we want to do, so how do we do it differently? They are not, they don't want to maintain what we're doing necessarily, they want to come up with some new approaches. That's my interpretation of what I heard yesterday and today, and from what I've guarded from talking to a lot of people, and hearing from a lot of people. So I disagree with your interpretation.
I was trying to, and not.
I think that's just plain wrong.
Seeing, I think, a strong preferences among the majority of the board for either Brian or Vicki, trying to focus discussion on, trying to help us reconcile between those So that's what I thought was clear in these kind of initial preference voting, because the next step could be to have everyone express, after we narrate discussions more, a first preference among those two, if someone would like to revisit that, or, yeah, Richard?
Well, I want to respectfully challenge the chair on that. Brian only got first two, only got two first-place votes, whereas Scott got three first-place votes. So I think that the body itself should vote to either endorse your ruling or not, before we proceed, under that assumption.
And I know Vicki got three first-place votes and two second-place votes as well, so I certainly would ask for a motion that we focus discussion on Brian and Vicki, seeing, I don't see the votes for Scott, if someone can make a motion to nominate Scott at any time.
I don't think we've heard from.
Yeah, I would like, but I also was trying to focus on those two, but let's finish that, the part that people can reflect on all three, if they would like to continue.
But I want to go back to what Richard is saying. Will you, will you identify, please, the vote that we took? How many got first place? How many got, I want to see what Richard is saying.
I had, Cassandra had Brian first, Vicki second. Michelle had Brian second, Vicki first. Richard had Scott first, Brian second. Eileen had Scott first and no second. Kathy had Vicki first, Brian second. Pam had Vicki first, Brian second, and I had Brian first, Vicki second.
What did I have?
You had one for Scott, I'm sorry, and no second.
Okay, so what does, okay, tell me the count now, please.
So the count is six first- or second-place votes for Brian, five first- or second-place votes for Vicki, and three first-place votes for Scott.
And my point was that there were three first-place votes for Scott, three first-place votes for Vicki, and two first-place votes for Brian.
Is that true?
Yes.
So then how can Brian be first?
It's a way to, it's a way to express some broader preferences of the board, is, on balance, six of us chose Brian for either first or second, and not Scott. Five of us chose Vicki, either first or second, and not Scott. Three chose Scott, and first, and no second.
May I say, we could do it either way, but I think that it behooves us to vote as to which way we're going to do it.
We could vote on whether we want to advance discussion of Brian and Vicki, or we could go right to a different strategy, which would be to take a preference poll on who everybody's first place of the voting members of the board is.
I don't think the issue right now is the vote. I think the issue is just trying to determine the best way to have the conversation. So by doing this, I think they looked at Scott has three first votes, therefore gave the three of you the opportunity to kind of express why you thought he should be number one, and now we're just going around and talking to the other ones who had other number ones, on why they think theirs is number one.
First place, you all who had Scott in first place, trying to persuade anybody else to change their vote, to, Scott had the least number of first- or second-place votes in total.
So, but I'm not sure that Kathleen finished her conversation, and Pamela hasn't had a chance to weigh in yet. So I would recommend that we continue that before we get into another vote, or, you know, questioning the vote, or anything like that. That's my recommendation.
Well, truly, I don't feel comfortable continuing, saying anything until I understand the count.
But Lupe, you've said a lot, and Kathleen hasn't had a chance to really say much, and Pamela hasn't had a chance to say anything.
Then, well, we'll finish, then I'm next, and it's going to be my position, I think, is next.
Pamela hasn't had a chance to speak yet, so maybe she could speak first, before you?
But I haven't spoken yet, am I next in line or not?
You have spoken.
Well, you're not the chair, am I next in line or not?
I was attempting to suggest with consensus that we focus on Brian and Vicki, sensing there wasn't, there was stronger support for either of those among the majority of the board. Your people aren't suggesting they don't want to do that, or some people, or few people. So we can continue with that process, or we could have a vote on whether to narrow the field by embracing the first preferences of the majority of the board for either Brian or Vicki, and proceed to focus on trying to decide between the two of them.
I object to your phrasing, because Scott and Vicki have the first-place votes. They'd be tied three to three. Those are the two we should be considering.
We're not considering anyone yet.
There is no consensus.
It's vote, it's the vote.
We're trying to move towards a consensus, more of us are preferring Brian.
I move that we consider Scott Menzel and Vicki Markovich as having each achieved, tied in the number of first-place votes. Is there someone second?
Second.
I think this is not reflecting certainly the overall preferences. Let me take a strategy that Tim recommended, and see where that lands us, and we did this, as you know, in public a couple of times before, which is go around the table and have everyone identify a first-place vote, a preference.
Can Pamela speak?
I'm sorry, Pam, yeah.
Before we do this?
No one has changed their position from the first.
Yeah.
Point of order, you're asking us to rescind our motion and continue with.
There is a motion on the floor, we can, either vote for it or against it.
Yeah.
I gave up my chair role, because I didn't want to be in the middle of this, so I don't think that's for me, but.
I'll be voting no, I'll just tell you that.
And I'll be voting no.
So we can have a conversation. So call the question.
If I may suggest, I think you could call the question.
So the motion on the floor is to move Vicki and Scott as the two first-place preference voters to set further consideration. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, sign, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
I don't, did you get the count on that? I don't know the vote.
All right, let's hear it again. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 What are we voting for?
You're voting for, your motion to move to, to center on Vicki and Scott as the two discussants to further. There's, that's the motion that's been made, as having the most first-place ballot.
Is there discussion?
The discussion, we just had, but you can have some more. Is there discussion on that motion?
Okay. I guess I want to see it in writing on a chart. How many got number, how many got first place? How many got second place? How many got third place? I want to see it in writing, so I can see in my bilingual mind how many each one received.
Right, so.
And then, and then I can vote, but I cannot, I don't have a picture of what we're voting.
All we're voting, let me just recap. Brian Wiston had two first-place votes and four second-place votes in a initial preference vote. Vicki Markovich had three, a total of six. Vicki Markovich had three first-place votes and two second-place votes, for a total of five first- or second. Scott Menzel had three first-place votes, no second-place votes, a total of three first- or second-place votes. The motion on the table is to move the two first-place vote-getters to final consideration, and eliminate Brian Wiston from further discussion. That's the motion on the table, it's been made, it's been seconded. All those in favor? Any further discussion on that motion?
I don't understand how the tally works. I don't understand.
It's just a tally of preferences based on articulated first and second from the voting board members.
Why not just first?
Well, that's, at some point, we're going to need to get there. But this is a way to try to help us narrow the field by articulating preferences, as we've been done before. So we've got, again, six, six total for Brian Wiston in terms of first- and second-place votes, two of which are first place, three total of first-place votes, and two second-place votes for Vicki Markovich, a total of five first- or second-place votes, three first-place votes for Scott Menzel with no second-place votes, and that gives a total of three. So, again, I, let's enter, let's call the question on this motion, which was to eliminate Brian Wiston from further discussion, and to continue discussion about Vicki Markovich and Scott Menzel, based on Richard's motion, which was they had three first-place votes each. That's the motion on the table, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. I believe the noes carry. I'm going to make a motion to, similar motion.
The chair make motions?
What's that?
In the chair make motions?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to make a motion that we, based on those initial preferences, of six first- or second for Brian, five for Vicki, first or second, and three first- or second for Scott, that we narrow discussion to Brian Wiston and Vicki Mark- for Scott, that we narrow discussion to Brian Whiston and Vicky Markovich and eliminate Scott Menzel from further discussion. Is there a second?
Do we need a motion for this? I mean, can't we just have the conversation?
Richard asked for a motion to basically do what I was encouraging us to do, given those voting preferences that we've seen. So I'd appreciate a second and a vote on that motion to continue discussion about Brian Whiston and Vicky Markovich and.
We just continue to talk, right?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, we'll continue to talk.
I don't think we need, I mean.
I think we should just continue to talk without passing a motion.
All right, if we don't need a motion, that's fine, but that is what I was suggesting appears to be the, the global preference of the board.
And, and this is helpful to me. It tells me that all three names are still in consideration.
Mm-hmm.
The motion would have been to eliminate someone from consideration, so, and that's what's been clarified by all this, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think we do need to eliminate someone from consideration at some point.
Yes, agree.
So why don't we finish with Lupe and Pam sharing perspective on, I was encouraging the two that appear to be, have the strongest overall preferences, but certainly continue to talk about Scott absent any elimination formal motion at this stage. So let's finish that, and then we are going to need to vote to eliminate someone from consideration.
We haven't got there yet.
Right, okay.
We all said it was going to be a difficult decision, that they were all good, so it would take a while.
Lupe, Pam, did you have anything more to say about Brian vis-à-vis Vicky and Scott?
I guess, you know, for me, for Vicky, we were talking about the diversity of the different candidates as far as the populations that they worked with. And Michelle, you've pointed this out, that with Vicky, she strongly was able to definitely show that she's worked with urban, suburban, rural, rich, poor, mid-income people, as well as refugee children, and those with English as second language. Like, she brought with her the dashboard, which was very impressive that she worked with Tom McMillan to put together. I also was impressed by the fact that she was able to reduce deficit while increasing achievement, and definitely pointed out how that was done, done through collaboration. Rapid turnaround with the split board and mentioned how she did that while experiencing cuts in funding. Some of the other things that she pointed out on day one, working with the governor to begin having these discussions as far as what does the reform district look like. There was one other point, using the adequacy study, not necessarily to, that it would increase money, but looking at ways to better collaborate and leverage. I really appreciated how she pointed that out. There were a few other things that, that I was able to collect that, that she emphasized. You know, I think as it relates to school choice, it sounds like she had a strong handle on that, that not opposed to charters, but really getting a, you know, a better handle and having better collaboration. And she mentioned how she has met with the charters and worked with some of those, the leads on some of those issues. Going to Brian, let's see here. You know, again, I, I will just again emphasize, you know, his experience as a school board member, as well as a superintendent, his emphasis on, on working with parents and students to help them to be a part of that, a part of their, taking ownership of, of their education, his experience as a lobbyist, all the things that, that would make them my first two preferences, or, I'm sorry, experience with the legislature. So there's others, but I mean, I, I think I'm being with that.
And again, as I reflect on these candidates, Brian vis-à-vis Vicky, and, you know, I've sort of reflected my thoughts about Scott, certainly Vicky, both today and kind of in articulating an education sort of direction and agenda, was very compelling and more nuanced certainly than what is understood about her. I have the same reservations Richard and others have about if you, if there's miscommunication or misunderstandings or, for whatever reason, inability to connect and link arms with stakeholders in the field, for whatever reason, that, and that couldn't be overcome despite what I believe to be Vicky's sincere efforts. That is a challenge for all of us and her in this role. That's why the, the excellent ability to build these relationships with the field and work together with Republicans and Democrats that I think Brian represents are very strong. And I also, someone said, listen to versus talk at educators, the staff and department here, us, and try to reflect well, sort of education agenda and vision. So I will certainly favor Brian with Vicky being a, a, a second, and Scott would be my third choice.
So we can either continue conversation, or should we try to eliminate one candidate so we can have a, a vote that doesn't end up 3-3-2? I said, should we continue conversation, or should we try to eliminate one?
We have to eliminate one candidate.
So that we can have a conversation about two candidates as opposed to three.
Let's do what we did before, which seemed to work. Why don't we ask the question, and by show of hands, each candidate, do you, are you not wanting to eliminate that candidate from consideration? You want to keep that candidate on the table. So let's go in order that they appear. The first candidate is Brian Whiston. Who would like to keep Brian in consideration for this position?
On the table?
Yep. I see one, two, three, four, five, counting myself. Okay. Vicky Markovich, which, who would like to keep Vicky Markovich on the table for further I see one, two, three, four, five. Scott Menzel, who would like to keep Scott Menzel on the table for further consideration discussion? I see three. Given that, I think it's appropriate and clear that we focus further discussion on Vicky and Brian and weigh the trade-offs and merits of them for superintendent. Is everyone comfortable with that? All right, let's go around again. Brian vis-à-vis Vicky, additional things that people want to say? Particularly those of you who were the first choice for Scott Menzel, as you reflect on those two, these choices between Vicky and Brian, talk to us about your relative perspective of their strengths and abilities for the job that we need to pull together to help do. Richard, Lupe, Eileen.
I would say that the majority of the board, or at least five people, have stated clearly that they did not consider a reform candidate to be the priority for the board. And so I would cede control to this to those of you who plan to sort this out, because for me, a reform candidate was a significant priority, someone who matched all of the things that we've said, all the, the discussions we've had for children over and over and over again through our, our monthly meetings. And I consider both of the candidates to be very good people. Either of them bring limitations to the position that I fear and may, may get us out of federal compliance or may cause problems for us unnecessarily with the constituency with whom we have to work. So, you know, I, I will, no matter who you choose, I will put forward every possible effort to work with them, and I cede control to you on this discussion.
Eileen, I certainly would differ with your characterization. I think we all, and certainly I, want a reform candidate who can help us be effective in moving reforms. I hope you don't abdicate your responsibility to participate in decision-making on the board. We need to pull together and together select the person that we think is on balance by this board on a bipartisan basis that's going to help us the most and help Michigan the most. And at, you know, at some point, each of us as voting members will be asked to share a preference, and I hope you will do so.
I have just said too, that I cannot, I cannot choose between these two candidates. I consider them both to be very, very good educators and very good people, but they do not, they bring, each of them brings issues to the table for this job that concern me deeply. And I will do everything in my, whoever's elected, I will do everything in my power to work with them constructively.
Lupe and, and Richard, if you think about Brian and Vicky on balance, given their relative strengths, what's your thinking?
Okay. This is a democratic process, democratic group, you're my colleagues. You have spoken. Brian has the majority, so I will put my support for Brian.
Richard, if you were to express a preference?
I think, I think Brian has some great things to bring to the table. I think, frankly, I think his style will be more of what, what board majority would like, someone to kind of bring us together and walk with us, maybe a little more temperate in dealing with the press, so I, and I'm from Dearborn, so I guess I go with my hometown guys.
Anybody want to share any other perspectives on these two and persuade each other?
I, I want to say that I could, I could live with any of the three, and so I can certainly feel comfortable with either of the two. I, I would like to take exception with the term reform and whatever that means.
Reform school.
Yeah, reform school. And I think everybody, as Kathy has said, everybody wants to see a change. I think they're all here because they want to see a change and improvement, and maybe they actually want to reform the so-called reforms, but they, simply because they're not for the status quo reform, doesn't mean that they're not looking to improve things and make things better for children, and certainly aren't capable and as capable as, as Scott to make those changes and as, and as visionary as, as he is. So I, I would like to just make that point.
Anything else about Brian and Vicky that people want to say? Then I would say the next thing is to ask all the voting members to express a preference for, a first-choice preference among Brian or Vicky.
No, just wanted to say one more thing about Vicky that no one has mentioned yet. It would be a breakthrough in a, in a sense for us to have a woman superintendent. No one has raised that before.
I did yesterday.
It is monitored. I didn't realize. Anyway, I think it would be, that would be okay. Plus, I think she's super qualified.
Any other discussion or comments?
I just want to say this one thing. I, I don't, my vote, because I didn't make Scott my top one or two choice, I think that, I, I would hope that in the future he would, would apply again.
Absolutely.
And get, and with some experience working in, you know, more experience, working in a high-poverty urban environment, which is such a consuming issue in education in Michigan, and it's, we really need some help on that. So I would hope he would come back, and I, and I could see him being superintendent someday, yeah.
Okay, well, since Scott's name came up again, I think Scott has the spirit, I think he has the experience, I think he has the drive, I think he has the passion, I think he has everything right now to be the state superintendent. We, we did not vote in his behalf, but as coming back, you know, he has it right now.
All right, given all that, which, if you were to express a preference, your first choice among Brian or Vicky? Cassandra?
Brian.
Vicky.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Vicky.
Brian.
Vicky.
Brian. What does that give us?
What does that mean? 3-3?
3-3, two abstentions.
All right, 3-3, two abstentions.
Maybe we can have co-suprentenders.
Yeah, co-suprentenders. Just kidding.
Well, this, why don't we take a minute or a five-minute break to regroup and try the best strategy for resolving that?
No, just, just to clarify communication here, you said a preference, and last time we used the word preference, my vote, my second place vote was used in a way that I had not anticipated, and so I did not want to vote here, not knowing quite what would be done with these preference votes.
Oh, but you want to vote.
I mean, when, when there is an action to be taken, I want to vote on the action, but when, when you use the term preference, I'm, I'm, that's why, that's why I abstain.
Again, we're, we're trying to, in discussion, you know, narrow the field more. That's why it would be very helpful if.
This would make a motion.
Our bipartisan colleagues participated in this, because our best decision is one that we make with the bipartisan majority of the board in terms of, and we're all trying to get their preferences between, given the democratic process, Brian or Vicky. So I certainly would very much appreciate some direction from my colleagues, all of them, about between those two, who might be the strongest choice that you have between those two. And as you can see, this is a tough decision. So if we voted again for those two, I mean, our preferences, and you all two were willing to express a preference, that would be helpful, because that might give us an indicator of who we might collectively advance to a vote. Do you want to try it again?
I can certainly say it again, but I view that both of these people are very good candidates, but I also anticipate that each of them has a weakness to them that would either put us out of federal compliance within a short period of time or cause problems for us with external units. So I have not been, I have said that for me to try and choose between them is not possible. I think they're both great people, and I would do everything I could to work with them, but I can't make that choice. Or the six of you, or the, somebody other than me feels strongly that these two candidates are your, your top choices. I, I respect that, I defer to it.
Richard, are you willing to express a preference for what's best for the board in Michigan in terms of these two?
That break is sounding pretty good right now.
All right, let's take a short break, five minutes, come back.
All right, stand, please, ladies.
Oh, hi. All right. Totally expected.
Totally expected. So.
Get started again, folks. Had a chance to reflect, cool off, but in that reflection, I think, please continue to consider, we're going to go around again with preferences overall between Brian and Vicki, reflecting on the sort of overall sense of the full board, also what might be most effective for us to come together and for us to be effective in our engagements and relationships with stakeholders in the broader community, including governor, legislature, and others that we must work effectively with. So I'm asking people to reflect on those points and Kathy's passing out clippings, or press clippings.
Not about this.
This is about that law, that unconstitutional business. That's yesterday's news.
Yeah.
So why don't we go around again? Again, if you were to express a preference in terms of most effective helpmate for all of us in education between Brian and Vicki, let's again take the temperature of the board. Cassandra?
Brian.
Michelle?
Pass me and come back around.
Richard?
I'll pass.
Eileen?
Pass.
Kathy?
Two, just in case.
Yes.
I pass. For now, I said come back around.
At some point, A, we can't stay deadlocked, and we can't pass, or should not. That would be an abdication of our responsibility as elected board members to help wrestle together with a good decision. So.
I'm going to stick with Vicki at this point.
Okay. Lupe?
Brian.
I'll stay with Vicki for now.
Brian, again, let me reiterate, we can't stay, it doesn't help the whole board, it doesn't help us Democrats to stay deadlocked upon reflection of preferences and discussion that you've heard today. It would help if we had some movement and some help from our Republican colleagues in terms of their preferences between these two. We will have to work together, continue to work together, whoever's picked superintendent, we're going to always try to be working together on a bipartisan basis. So it'd be very, very helpful if you were willing to support and/or at least express a preference about our remaining candidates. So let's try it again. Cassandra?
Brian.
Michelle?
In the name, I mean, I, given that there seemed to be more consensus for Brian initially, I will vote for Brian.
Preference for Brian.
Preference for Brian.
Richard?
I'll pass.
Eileen?
No choice between those two candidates, they're wonderful people.
Kathleen?
Like, maybe you're semi-consensus.
And know that all the board members were asked prior, would they be willing to take the job if there was a split vote? The semi-consensus point was not used, but, and they all agreed absolutely. They understood the dynamics at work, so, yes.
Well, I think, I think, I admire Vicki tremendously, and I think the perception of her is incorrect, but at this stage of the game, I think maybe Brian has more of a chance of working constructively with the legislature. Although I think it'd be foolish not to work with Vicki. Brian does have skills in that area that are very impressive, and I'll go with Brian.
Okay. Lupe, I assume you're still?
I think I already voted.
Right, yeah. Pam, did you vote?
I, you know, Vicki is, still remains to be my top choice. Obviously, I can live with Brian. Someone has brought up that it would be nice to have a female, a woman superintendent. No one can say that she has not performed well in the interviews. No one has been able to say that she does not have a depth of knowledge. You know, with these positions of power and being out front, not everybody likes what you do, not everyone likes what you say, and it's unfortunate that here we are in March, and I'll say it because it's Women's History Month, that doesn't always bode well for women. So, you know, that's unfortunate. I definitely want to be a strong part of this team that we have here. And, you know, when we first started out, I very much appreciated the closed-door process that we used in coming up with the six candidates. And it seemed that on both sides, the Republicans as well as us, the Democrats, we looked at all the candidates, and, you know, we looked at a person such as Brian, and we looked at the fact that I believe that he is a Republican. And so, you know, so here we are. I'm struggling because I feel that we have a strong female candidate, and then we have our Republican counterparts who are not necessarily, you know, coming along nicely even with Brian. So that's a struggle for me.
So if you had a preference between Brian and Vicki, given all of that, that you'd like to express?
Yeah, exactly. I can do whatever I have to do at this point. I can stay with Vicki for right now.
All right, so, and I'm continuing to prefer Brian, so as I just note, these preferences, we have Cassandra, Brian, Michelle, Brian, two abstentions, Brian from Kathleen, Lupe, Brian, Vicki from Pam, and Brian from me. So that's one, two, three, four, five, with two passes and one for Vicki preferences. So, given that, I appreciate the difficulty of getting to that kind of preference position, but that appears to reflect a majority of the board in terms of preferences. Again, I wish our Republican colleagues would be participating so we can continue to pull together and express their preferences. Between these two, it would be very helpful to share in the decision-making, and I'm disappointed that you're not willing to, because certainly the spirit here and the commitment here has always been to work together across party lines and pull together and make decisions together that are best for the collective board. And I think we've been through a healthy, open democratic process, certainly today. No one can say we haven't in terms of that decision-making. Yes?
May I make a motion? That we offer the position to Brian Wiston?
And the motion should include, and that you empower the state board president to offer the position to Brian Wiston and work towards successful negotiation of a final contract.
I'll accept that.
I would like to support that.
All right, motion's been made and supported to offer the position of superintendent of public instruction to Brian Wiston upon, and empower the state board of education president to make that offer and work out the details, hopefully satisfactorily, of a contract, which if that is done, then he will be superintendent, and if we fail, then we'll be back here next week for Groundhog Day Seventeen or whatever. So anyway, that's, I appreciate the motion, appreciate the support. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say, I think it was important for the majority to resolve, and I appreciate their working that out. I also appreciate the second, who, like myself, was not initially supportive, but since this, it is, since direction is clear, I think it is true that we need to come together and work for the success of our new superintendent and Michigan Department of Education for the sake of our people.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
So I think we need a roll call vote, correct?
I would also say, one more comment. I will be voting no, but it has nothing to do with my willingness to work with Brian or if this motion fails to work with whoever, or if the contract cannot be negotiated, to work with whoever is selected.
It would even be healthier if, given the sentiments of the full board, people were willing to express a unanimous support for the offer of the superintendency, so just reflect on that as we take a vote. Any further discussion on this motion?
I think we ought to also, I don't know if it should be part of the motion, but to thank the other finalists, in fact, all the semifinalists as well, but especially the finalists, for excellent presentations, excellent qualifications, and we hope they'll be back and work with us during the, you know, continue to work with us and then maybe in the back apply again, as Michelle said.
I thank you, Kathleen, and I tried throughout to routinely note and thank terrific candidates, the finalists, a very strong, difficult decision, obviously, and all the semifinalists and applicants. So we're lucky to have had such good people step forward, and appreciate that. Any other discussion on the motion? You want to call the roll, Marilyn?
Austin?
Yes.
Pecto?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Pew Smith?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Wiser?
No.
Siley?
Yes.
Seven-one carries.
Great, motion carries. We are offering the position of superintendent of public instruction to Brian Wiston. Congratulations, Brian, congratulations to all the finalists. Note that Tim Quinn and the search firm will be engaging, helping in these discussions. All the candidates basically had a preview of what type of contract we would be trying to execute, and were satisfied with the term.